Called the uh needing to order to go over the uh like spotted and or the work session.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Yep. Do we need to dim these lights? Can you guys sleep? You guys also have the document in front of you that he would be allowed as well. Yeah.
Clearly went to school with this guy.
Yeah, I know. Think I might be a little older.
Uh he's talked about hanging out with the pars.
She's on her way back from my city. Okay.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
So it's just a work session, so you can go ahead and get started whenever you would like. It's not a formal meeting. The reason we posted is because there is a.
Yeah, okay, so I'm not sure what we do to, we're going to hear from Taylor, right?
Taylor, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
If you want to go ahead and get started with the information that you have, you're more than wel- welcome to.
Yeah.
Can you see my screen? No? Yes?
Well, that's with the lights a little bit and see if it makes it better. But go ahead and get started.
Yeah, your screen's not up, Taylor.
Oh, yeah, hold on. Can you see that now?
Yes, we can see that. Your desktop screen.
Okay, so that's my kid. Okay.
There.
There we go.
Yeah, I think that's better for us. I don't know about. Okay, I'll go ahead.
All right. Well, thanks for having me again this year. For those who don't know, I'm Taylor Johnson with Bowman and Miller, and we've done your audit for the last. Four, four years now, so. Uh, I'll kind of go through this in two parts. So the first part, uh, I'll go through. Um, the numbers side of things and then I'll uh jump through the comments, so. Uh, if you got any questions along the, along the way, just let me know. So this first page here, and do you guys have this in front of you too by chance?
What page?
The very first page with the different fund balances and different funds.
You guys have the actual. Oh, we have the actual. This is the one that was.
In the back?
Yep, in the email, so you'll have to go back further in that part. We wanted us to bring the actual.
Okay.
Okay, I, okay, so I got a packet that condenses a sixty-page audit into. A much more tolerable uh amount. Oh, and, and the uh, the actual audit. Filed went out in the mail today due to the weather, so you guys will be getting those here. In the next day or two. So going through here, uh, fun by fun, you'll see the different changes here. So the general fund decreased just under three hundred thousand. And for all these, I'll go through in a minute. Um, kind of the reason why. So the general fund went down three hundred thousand. Road use decreased uh over sixty-three-five. Lost fund increase had a good year of ninety-five thousand doll- ni- ninety-five thousand dollar increase. Debt service decreased a hundred nine thousand. We had a big increase of almost one point seven million in capital projects. Uh, sewer up about seven hundred seventeen thousand. Electric increased uh just under three hundred forty-four thousand. And solid waste went down three hundred sixty-one thousand. You'll see the stormwater here, which we'll touch on in a minute. First year for that fund, uh, so we had an increase of ninety-six thousand. And jumping down some of the other ones, uh, library trust fund increased about a hundred fifty-eight thousand. One thing I want to point out here is the total fund balance down below for all the funds. You see, you've had steady increases year over year for. For four straight years now, which, which is good. So at the end of the year. For twenty-twenty-three, June thirty, twenty-twenty-three, you had almost sixteen point three million in fund balance, which is, it, you, we audited on a cash basis, so that's. Cash CDs sixteen point three million, which per city year, guys decide, I think, I think it's really good and. You're in a good, healthy state financially. Coming down kind of why all those changes on the revenue side here, um, in, in the lost fund. Uh, we, we had an increase in revenue, uh, just due to economic growth going on in the city. The TIF fund, you'll see the revenue was down, but over four years, it's still up, and that's just with all the new economic development projects. You guys got going on. Uh, debt service was down, and that was due, we'll touch on this in the comments, but there was no levy for the debt service in FY twenty-three. And then capital projects had some revenue of two point three million due to bond proceeds that it received uh during the year. Sewer fund was down, there was a bond refunding in FY twenty-two that we didn't have in FY twenty-three, so that caused a decrease in revenue. Electric was up, revenue's almost over six point three million. You had an increase in electric rates during the year, which uh helped drive the revenue there. Stormwater was up over a hundred or almost a hundred eight thousand uh for its first year. In FY twenty-three. You'll see that FEMA fund, you've had two years' worth of ARPA money flow through there. That's where that's getting posted. So overall, again, your revenues year over year, you, you're almost at sixteen point nine million in revenue. Each year, uh, or the, in this past year, and you see a steady increase. And one thing I wanted to point out is in cities your size is on, and especially on a cash basis, when you do these bond. Refunding and stuff, it can really skew the revenue year over year, but you guys have continued. To have an increase uh year over year, which I think is great, says a lot about the financial condition that you guys are in um. For the city. Coming down to expenses, you'll notice we budget by, or it's organized by function and not by fund, because that's how we budget. So big changes here, culture and recreation, um, there was some concrete work and a lighting project that caused an increase in expenses there. Community economic development, uh, we'll, we'll see in the comment, there were, the TIF rebates weren't paid out, which caused a decrease in expenses. General government, this is where the ARPA funds and the economic development grants were posted and expended through, so we had an increase there. Capital projects, the Maxon Rainbow Project was ongoing during FY twenty-three, which had almost eight, so caused almost eight hundred thousand expenditures. Water, there was water fund, there was more bond interest and some equipment purchases during the year, so we were almost at a million dollars of expenditures. And then sewer, you'll see the big decrease here, um, that was due to the water, uh, or the sewer bond refunding in the prior year that we didn't have. Have this year. Solid waste, there were two garbage trucks that were purchased that caused the increase in expenditures in that fund. The total expenditures for the year were under fifteen million. And you'll see uh for the year. You had a net increase in fund balances, like your net income of almost one point nine million, and so you can see four straight years. Uh, year over year, you're increasing your fund balance each year, and you had another good year financially, so. That's kind of the brief touch on the numbers. Does anyone have any questions before I go on to the comments? If not.
Everyone is shaking their head, Taylor, so.
Okay. All right. I'll go on to the comments. Here, which is gonna be, I'm gonna start, it's page forty-eight of the audit report, if you wanna follow along. Um, if you want to just pack in front of you. So the first one here is segregation of duties. This is a repeat of last year, and I, I said this last year, and I'll say it again this year. In almost any small governmental audit. You're gonna see a segregation duties comment. It's just, you have a few people wearing many different hats, and it causes. Uh, it's, it's nearly impossible to completely eliminate uh segregation of duties. Issue, and, and I think you guys, as long as I've been doing it, have improved in this area, uh, and. Have, have made some changes to lessen this comment, because it's not as much as it was in years past. Um, but I just use a yearly reminder for. Council members and the mayor to look at the reports, ask questions. Be involved and have, have good oversight. Going down to the second comment there on page forty-nine, the bank reconciliation, so. This actually is only for the friends of the library, um, because they're a component unit of the city. This is actually not, this was a comment for the city last year, but it's not for this year. Yep.
You're, all of a sudden, your volume went down. We can't hardly hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that sounds really good.
Okay. And so this bank reconciliation comment has to do uh with the friends of the library, uh, and their bank reconciliation or lack thereof throughout the year. Um, I, I discussed it with them, and they're uh working on some changes to, to get that alleviated, so, but nothing for the city. Like we had in the prior audit. Financial reporting, which slips over on to page fifty, there were four different. Things here that we noted during the year that we lumped into one comment. So the first one is. Uh, bond interest was overpaid by the city by twenty-two thousand two hundred seventy-five bucks during the year. Uh, twelve thousand seventy-five of that was returned to the city, and then the other ten thousand two hundred. The city and the employees are still working on getting back at, at year end. Um, number two, revenue expenditures were overstated by five hundred and twenty-three thousand due to how the city. Is showing income from city utility bills and then adding an expenditure on the city's books to offset. That bill. We talked at length about it at the exit conference, and I think Lee and Sherry have a plan going forward of how to uh alleviate this on the books. Thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars of bond interest and fees were posted to the wrong funds, um, and as you'll see down below, adjustments were subsequently made. To correct that item. And then number four, deposits into the city's internal service fund, which is like the health insurance fund. Were not done timely and uh we're not being reconciled back to the payroll reports. And there was a variance in deposits throughout the year, and we talked through this with Lee and Sherry about the issues with that and. Moving forward, and I think this will get corrected as part of the continued process of reviewing the bank recs with the strides you guys have made going forward. Continuing on here to utility billing, uh, another one we talked about at the exit conference. So utility billing reconciliations are being done, but the differences are not. Being resolved in a timely manner. So a utility billing reconciliation. Is kind of like a bank rec, but for utility billing, you factor in what people owed you at the beginning of the month. Factor in the charges and the payments, and then come back to, is the system. Calculating to what is still owed to you by the customers at, at month end. This is being done throughout the year, but there's uh, there's some differences that aren't being resolved, but we talked at the exit conference. I believe, and Lee and Sherry can correct me if I'm wrong, they're gonna change the timeframe of when it is to make it easier to reconcile, which. To me, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter what timeframe it is, as long as it's getting done, some kind of checking balance on, on the utility billing reconciliation. To make sure uh it's, the system is, is working how, how it should. So. Continuing on here, um, number five, reconciliation of ambulance service collections. Uh, so you have a third-party company that administers all the ambulance billings, and they do the delinquent accounts. The reconciliation of ambulance billing, the collections and uh. Collected the delinquent accounts. The, the one thing that I think the city should be factoring in and doing. That, that I don't believe is being done, is they send you a report for, you know, what, what they billed. Uh, with the charges, what's been paid and what's still owed at the end of the month. The, the one step farther that I would suggest taking it is uh taking what. They say is paid off that report and matching it up and reconciling back to what the city received. Just simply to make sure you're getting all the payments. They think you're getting and that you're in, entitled to throughout the year. So just another good check and balance that. I think can be, can be short enough.
And we have that in place now, so Debbie Kirk Reiner does that, so she is working through this one actually. And then we should be able to find the differences that there are.
Okay, going on to payroll records management, comment number six there, so there's two parts to this. One, uh, three, three monthly I Bruce reports. Uh, weren't timely filed throughout the year, and the city paid late fees of uh ninety-one bucks. And then seven monthly deposits were not made timely throughout the year, which result in late fees, uh, or excuse me, interest of a hundred and. Forty dollars. Then also, there were eight EFTPS payments not made during the year. This is your federal payroll tax deposits. But at year end, three of those E, EFTPS payments were still unmade, but then after the year end, payments were subsequently made. Uh, to pay on these amounts owed to EFTPS. So, uh, a- and I think. Part of this was the transition during FY twenty-three, there was a lot of transition with staff. Whatnot, and I think better procedures are in place now to um. Make sure uh all these things are, are getting done, and reports and payments are being made, made timely, so. Disaster recovery plan, this is a repeat of last year, so. Obviously, with, with everything uh that can happen in a city. Uh, it's good to have a plan to know what to do, and we would suggest having one. Um, and documenting the procedures of how to carry out in the event of a disaster. Transfers, um, so there were two transfers that were approved by city council but never made to the general ledger system. Uh, but this was corrected as part of the journal entries that I gave to Lee and Sherry to make. Um, just going through, making sure that what, what gets approved as transfers is. Actually made to, to the financial statements, and I mean, it can affect. How, how the reports come out and how much money are, are in different, different funds, so. There's another good check and balance that I believe can be alleviated as part of the bank reconciliation process that. The city continues to, to build on. Those were the internal control. Comments. Are there any questions on any of those before I go through the statutory comments here? If not, I'll keep going, so. Uh, the first comment has to do with the certified budget, so there were two budget amendments during FY twenty-three. Uh, in July, in May. However, amounts exceeded the amounts budget for the business-type activity function, which is like water, sewer, electric, um. And then the amounts budgeted for inter-fund transfers were, were also exceeded. The budget in the general government function, the debt service function were. Weren't exceeded and totaled during the year, but they were exceeded before the budget amendment as part of what we test as part as during our audit. So we just recommend watching those budget reports, try, we live in an imperfect world. But try to not s- overspend your budget before uh it's exceeded. Throwing down here, questionable dis- dispersments, um, there's only one we noted, and it had to do with uh. Buying meals for employee training. The state really harps on buying food with, with taxpayer dollars and, and documenting the public. Purpose for it, so I believe you guys passed a policy after year end for what, how to document that, but. It, it is a, it is good to document what the public purpose of, of buying the. Buying food for employees is, because. The state kind of looks at it as, well, they're, they have to eat whether they're working or not, so what's the public purpose of, of buying it, so. But again, I believe you guys passed a policy after year end to uh document this. Travel expenses, those were, those were all good. Business transactions, so there were uh. Two different vendors, we had to note, but since it's less than six thousand dollars, you don't have to respond to it, and it's not a comment, it's just simply noted in the report. Uh, cardinal signs and graphics, and then big print. Big imprint LLC. Restricted donor activity, nothing was noted for that. Uh, another kind of yearly reminder, this is where. You have a potential vendor from the city that if uh a city employee or a council member, member of governance. Takes something more than three dollars in value, um, it's technically a violation of the Code of Iowa. So just. Try not to take the freebies from Trump potential vendors, um, so we're not out of compliance there. Bond coverage are all good, city council minutes, good, deposits, investments, good as well. Revenue bonds. Uh, we're out of compliance this year on the water. Water revenue bonds, so your net revenue, so your charges less your just operating expenses. Has to be at least a hundred and ten percent of the principal and interest due during the year on these bonds, and we were. We were below that, so, um, and I believe. Lee and Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I believe you're starting down the path of a water rate study, is that what we said at the exit. Conference to look at rates and whatnot to, to do? Okay, so that'll, we had this comment with the electric last year, and then you implemented the new rate study, or the new rates this year, and alleviated that, so I. I think you're on the right path to getting this corrected for the water, water rates. Um, continuing on, local option sales tax, so your local option sales tax ballot has, is for three things, property tax relief. Uh, street, streets, curbs and gutters and sewer and community development projects. So dispersments weren't, aren't being tracked for the specific. Criteria of how those are used in regards to community and. Community development projects, so we would just suggest tracking when you make that transfer. Out of lost fund, that you track and document how that, those monies are being, being spent in accordance with the, the lost ballot. Tax increment financing rebate agreement, so you currently have two. Development agreements uh for residential housing units, and. If, if developers uh. In compliance with the agreement, they uh, the city's required to remit. A certain percentage of the tax increment finance, the TIF funds to the developer. And that, that did not get done during the year, and to date, uh, the developer has been under rebated by thirty-three thousand and fifty-six dollars. And I, I believe Lee is working on getting that squared up now that we got through the audit. And making sure those payments get made, um, and, and caught up to, to date.
That's correct, so.
Throwing down here, debt service fund balances is a, a repeat for the last few years, um. So the city continues to carry a debt service fund balance of over eight hundred forty-seven thousand, and it dates back to twenty nineteen. Um, of, uh, in that audit report that the state actually did, that basically. A bond that was, you. You levied for the whole bond, but part of the bond was also used with TIF dollars, so it kind of got doubled up. Uh, during that year, and then this money is carried over, carried over. We, we talked to the exit co- exit conference about different things you can do, and I told Lee to. Contact your, your bond attorney, but I think the ideas we came up with, it sounded like were. Pretty in line with what the bond attorney is recommending of using, using those funds that you have sitting there to pay down some. Uh, general obligation debts, whether they're already incurred, or if you're going to incur it using, using that money. To, just, and, and you already did not levy for property tax in FY twenty-three, um, so. I, I think you're on the right track to getting this alleviated here. Continuing on, unclaimed property. So if checked for more than two years outstanding, you're supposed to turn them over to the. Office and treasurer state. This hasn't been done in uh quite a few years, and this uh. Ne- needs to be done, just to kind of help, one. You're required to do it, two, to get the outstanding items on the bank rec cleaned up. Um, so I believe Lee and Sherry are gonna work on that. Here, um, to get those turned over to the treasurer state. Twenty-eight E agreement, so the agreement calls for the city to pay bills for the district and then get the bill to the district for their portion of it by the tenth of the following month. And the agreement also calls for the city to receive eight hundred fifty dollars each calendar year. For answering calls, as well as to receive at least fifteen thousand from the district for the fire reserve fund. Uh, two bills during the year were not billed until after the tenth of following month, and we did not know anywhere where the city received eight hundred fifty dollars. Or, and they also only received eighty-five hundred for the fire, fire reserve. I, I believe, um. Lee is working on uh diving into that, but just something that we, we noted in the audit. Sales tax, um, so you start the stormwater service during the year. And stormwater is subject to sales tax on non-residential commercial operations. Um, according to the Code of Iowa, that's listed there, and this didn't get done, and we, we talked about the exit conference about it, and I believe this is gonna. Get corrected here, um, and start charging sales tax according to Code of Iowa on storm. Last comment here, annual urban renewal report, um, this has to do with TIF. And the debt listed on the annual urban renewal report was understated by almost nineteen thousand. Uh, we, we talked through it at the exit conference, and I. This, this is correctable going forward, um. Again, this is one of those reports that I, I think very few people look at, but still, we. Just, you know, try and get the correct information listed on the report, which I, I believe will get done, so. That's all the comments I have. Is there any questions from anyone that I can answer?
Karen, I've been through this with Lee and, and Sherry, and so. Uh, I really want to make sure that the other members of the council, if you have any questions that, uh, we're able to answer, though.
I do think we're on a good track from last year. Last year, I feel definitely different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
So, uh, my recommendation, um, uh, for Sherry and I will be to take the comments. Um, what Sherry and I will do is we'll take the comments and we'll set aside, it'd be. A period of time that we can go through and we can identify. Um, on those items, uh, what we've done, uh, where, what we've got corrected, what we have in process. I think along with that, then, uh, by setting at least, um. At minimum, a quarterly meeting with our finance committee of, of council to then give a report to them. Um, so they can be tracking what we, what we're accomplishing and what we're doing. And that way, that when we get into the next audit, um, then we're gonna have the ability to be able to show what we've been. There are some items here that, um, you know, they, they started and, and we're starting to see them come off of the. But there are some items too that we continue to work as, as the both of us are learning through and, and delegating the duties, um. That for a lot of years, it was just the two of us carrying the duties of these. And so that's definitely, as Taylor's saying, it's making a difference, because by delegating them out. Um, not wearing too many hats, so things get overlooked or don't get done in a timely, uh, place, um. I know for, and I can let the clerk speak on behalf of, for me, I, I feel like as Councilor Schultz said, that you. We've made some great strides, given that, you know, our roles just recently changed in the last months, and, um, we've continued to make. Um, efforts, um, the whole entire time, uh, working with, uh, Taylor, with Bowman and Miller, um, the auditors are very. Um, educational, um, with us, I mean, they have a job to do. And, um, they do it very well, but at the same time, they provide us education, they provide us, you know, steps. To help us become better at our jobs, so I just want to make sure that it's, it's a, it's a positive working relationship with them. But, but most importantly, they're doing their jobs to help us better at our jobs.
And I also want to give a lot of credit to my staff. My staff is very new at their positions, and they were able to help me get. A lot of the stuff over to the auditors, so that the auditors didn't have to come in chaos this year, so. They did a lot of work, especially being brand new in your positions, so I would like to recognize them as well.
Okay, anything else from council?
I just wanted to add, I think you guys are in a really good spot financially, like I said, um, you're in a really strong cash position. Uh, I think you're in good shape there, and, and I think you guys got a real opportunity between now and June thirtieth. Um, of this year, before we start the next audit, to get, to get some of these items cleaned up and, and. I've, I've already seen some improvement, and Lee and Sherry were, and the whole staff worked very hard, and. So I, I think there's a good opportunity here for the city to take some good steps here in the next six months.
Uh, and I just wanted to say too, Taylor, you can, I was trying to look for that paper again, um, but when I joined council in. Now elected in fifteen, I joined in sixteen. Um, the budget was around three thousand dollars. I think, two to three thousand, I, I want to say, or was it four and a half? I'm trying to remember that.
Talking about, because when Lee came in, it was a two million dollar.
I'm, yes, I mean, a million, sorry, sorry, wrong, I, I forgot to add a couple zeros onto that. Um, yes, yes, uh, two to three million dollars, and now, uh, we are up to. Like sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, so your, your expenditures were fifteen million the last, basically, two years. Um, and when I took over in twenty twenty, it was. Uh, about twelve point nine. Um and when I took over in twenty twenty, it was uh about twelve point nine.
So it has been an an increase all all around, but it's not because, you know, we're. Taxi taxing taxing, it's because of the fact that we have these city services. That we're able to provide for our customers and um. The overall like uh assessments of property taxes in general.
I mean, it uh as Councilmember McBarren was saying, um so. Um when I had the opportunity to come on board, um the the financial status was. You know, two million, we had a solid waste that was in a negative, um we also had um some. General obligation, general funds that were also in a negative standing, and so over the year. Uh council due diligence, and most importantly, through staff's due diligence. Of working to understand and taking time to understand budgets, um even with everything else that's gone on and. And um transition of people, um the core staff has continued to be diligent and. Um how do I want to say, you know, making great progress and building up our. Um our business funds and even our general obligation, where we're not over expending or exceeding what we're receiving. And again, um for clerk Hofer and myself, our goal is is to um. Again, make sure that all of our departments have the resources and the tools that they need in order to be. You know, safe and and do their jobs correctly, but at the same time, our goal is to build our reserves, so then when we do get into a position where we have to borrow money. Um for the purchase of um capital equipment or capital projects, then we're also in a position where we can, you know. Have a good down payment, if you'd like to say, or at the end of the day, sometimes just having that rainy day fun when. Um you're in the middle of a snowstorm and your uh backhoe breaks down and you can't move, you know. Two foot of snow or, you know, or, I mean, these things come up all the time, unfortunately, or you have a garbage truck that decides that it's done. Right in the middle of the route, and there's nothing that you can do, and you've got to go out and purchase. And so to be able to put ourselves in a situation financially where um, you know, cash flowing, but some of these things were at least getting a good down payment. Towards, and as um Taylor pointed out, I mean, the the covenant of our bonds. Um so that's really important going forward, is that we're meeting those covenants, those rules, um that we're staying in line with those, because. While we're not, that shows, you know, that's somewhat like a credit score, so. You know, if you have your um investor seeing that, you know, you're not able to maintain that, then it's. Going to cost the city more money um to get uh, you know, notes and and revenue bonds or general obligation bonds for that purpose. So um so those are things that we'll continue to stay on top of and and uh. When we're along, we're do, I mean, we've we've come, I think we're about two years past our water utility review. And so with that said, I mean, we'll get that going right away, so we can think of looking at it.
We'll be uh talking with Mayor Greer and uh the city administrator of Marshalltown about some of the policies they have. Uh and seeing if we could share some of that information, uh so we will put in a good word for the uh great accounting firm at Marshalltown as well. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, they have that, um they have the a nice emergency uh disaster recovery plan in place, so.
Well, it it's it's well tested between a tornado, a derecho, and whatever else.
Durachos, yes, right, yeah.
Yep.
I remembered them all very well.
Yep, yep, Lee is is the audit report on the docket for the meeting tonight to approve?
We did not get the audit report on the docket for it to prove.
Okay.
We will have it on the first meeting um in February.
Okay, I just want to put down, remember to check with you, because I I won't, I won't submit to the state till you guys approve it. So on the sixth.
You are on the claim to be paid, though.
Yeah, there are claims to be paid, so.
Okay.
That's good news, yeah, I mean, so, yeah, normally we would hold it in the same night, but um. And in respect that we do have some newer council members and with a new mayor, I just wanted to. Make sure that they had time to, you know, digest everything that they heard at the work session tonight. So in case that there was some concerns or questions that we needed to come back to you with Taylor, that we gave them ample time to do that before we. Before we put it for them to approve, so, and I also, um Sherry and I also owe you the journal entry completion. So we'll make sure we've fallen up with all of that this week, so, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.